Commissioners, the meeting is live.
Good morning, welcome to May twenty ninth meeting, Rhode County Commission. Please stand and join in pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You've got a crowd to go to, but I guess it's not for us.
Probably not. That might be a good thing, though, depending.
Go ahead, Shannon.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Shannon Sterling with the Riley County Reach Committee, and I'm here to present the Employee of the Month Award. So this nomination came in for Vivian. Where did she go? So Vivian was nominated for Employee of the Month in recognition of her outstanding dedication, kindness, and unwavering support to her colleagues and the organization as a whole. Vivian constantly goes above and beyond her regular job duties. She is always willing to lend a helping hand, not only within her department, but across all departments in the county, assisting with communication, sorry, communication needs and tasks that require extra support. Her teamwork and can-do attitude make her an invaluable asset to the county. But truly sets Vivian apart is her genuine compassion for people. She brings warmth and humor to every interaction, often shares jokes to brighten someone's day or offer a smile when they need it the most. Her positive, her positivity is contagious, and her thoughtful nature creates welcoming atmosphere to everyone she encounters. Vivian also takes great pride in representing the county and makes a point of ensuring that new employees feel welcomed and appreciated. Her professionalism paired with her personal touch reflects the high standards we strive to uphold as an organization.
Oh, yes. Hand your camera to someone else.
Yeah, I wonder not myself.
I was totally shocked. It's really like one of the best parts, and thank you for saying so many nice things that really, I'm a little verklempt, so thank you.
Got several.
Thank you for everything, too.
Any other public comments?
Yeah, good morning, Commissioners Jacob Hansen, interim county councillor. Just a couple of things I wanted to bring up during a public comment. First is we got county official luncheon, of course, coming up. We've got a couple of topics planned, and so I would like to know what the commission wants to do for lunch on that day. We did McAllister's.
Lobster, come on. I'm gonna keep missing until I get it. I don't have the bone.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, um, I don't know. Like I said, we did McAllister's last time. I don't know what you guys typically like to do.
Pizza, may jays.
So are AJs, okay.
Oh, I'll be able to eat anyway. I've got a doctor's appointment.
Oh, for heaven's sake.
Yeah.
Change it.
Might just do it anyway, just to be me.
All right, so we got AJs for the county official luncheon. I also wanted to mention that on Monday, I will not be present as I will be unboxing all of my stuff while I'm moving to here in Manhattan.
Oh, yeah.
That's exciting. And then my last, or one of my other points at least is as far as the presentation from the developers, the Frontier Development Group for our RHID project that's moving through, would you guys want that more in a presentation format, a Q and A format? How would you like basically the discussion to happen so that way I can let them know what's prepared more?
Yeah, I'm a little confused on that. Are we having them come back in to give a presentation and then voting at the same time?
No, 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 you don't have to vote at the same time. This is really just to kind of give you guys a final opportunity to ask questions before you guys have to vote, because you guys don't have to vote on the RHID for a while, and I think we're tentatively planning for that sometime around either the twelfth or the sixteenth, somewhere around there.
Yeah, and I'm gonna be gone the sixth.
Sixteenth, so I think we'll try to shoot for the twelfth.
Or, um, is there, are there, is there a change in their presentation from the last?
They haven't mentioned if there is or isn't. I'm assuming not at this point. I imagine the presentation will be likely the same. They haven't mentioned one way or another.
They were gonna go to one level townhouses, but I don't know if that's true.
These aren't townhouses. These are.
I know.
This is, this is one of the three projects that are kind of new to there. One of them isn't going to require RHID, and the other ones are.
Well, it's a little kitten one.
Right, yeah.
You're listening. They talked about two stories, but then I heard somebody said one story. How about this next?
Now, this one's always been just fifteen hundred square feet on the floor.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the board could have it with the developer or the board if you just wanted a session with staff to talk about our policy and, you know, what to expect coming up. So I think we could have it. We could have, or the other, or do both.
I don't like that, because I do have some, I do have some thoughts on our policy and some ideas. I've already mentioned them to you, but might be a good time to go ahead and invite them and have them there. We can kind of incorporate both into that, and that's kind of fun.
And there's a couple of things in their presentation that I want to show that, that questions on. Some of their financials don't add up.
Would you, would you guys want me to say essentially, bring a shortened summarized version of your presentation and then just be ready?
Financial presentation, yeah.
Okay.
And I had been contacted with the representative from the chamber. They are, they were thinking about coming to the board and approaching you to discuss publicly in an open meeting. Their perspective on the RHID, so I don't know if you want to, Jacob, reach out to them to have them part of it or not, or?
No, I mean, I know what they, their scale, we know what their thoughts are.
Send us a email.
Just asking. And then clarification on a previous topic. You talked about county officials, which you might want to throw out there, what the suggested topics were.
Oh, yeah, sure. The topics that we have currently are, of course, fiscal year twenty twenty six budget, employee day strategic planning, and update on comprehensive and strategic plans. That's what we got so far.
And I just threw out there the budget if the board wants to have that discussion. It's not coming from staff, so if the board wants to, I suggested you might want that.
Well, I, I was thinking about that, too, because I saw the email, but did it have all the numbers? Did it even discuss anything at that time?
No, I just think it's a general discussion. Just, we got the expenditure side, but I, general discussion. If you don't want it on there, take it off. I just thought maybe you might want to.
Okay.
But we don't have to.
Yeah, it's fine with me.
Topics sometimes, it sounds like we have a few.
Can't do specifics, but just a general overview of it.
I like, I like the open dialogue kind of.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll keep it on there. All right, and then as far as my last point goes, we just got notification that our ten twenty five executive session, one of the participants isn't going to be able to make it, so we're trying to see if we can't get that eleven fifteen moved up to ten twenty five. But we're still in the process of trying to figure that out, but we're going to try to have that moved. So that's it for public comment.
Quick comment, Evan McMillan, Public Works. I just wanted to give a heads up that the transfer station's brush pile is getting pretty large, so given the rainy weather, we may be burning it next week. I'll come back Monday just with an update. Thank you.
Speaking of, we had a large willow tree that's been at my place ever since I've been there. They cut it down yesterday, and it looks really, really weird. Don't know what you got till it's gone.
Any other public comments? Uh, go to Commissioners.
Okay, well, um, well, hopefully everybody had a safe and pleasant Memorial Day weekend. I kind of spent the four days just recharging and relaxing. I unplugged and left everything alone until Monday evening, so did go out and visit some of the grave sites of some family members kind of located in the area. Caught up on a couple of TV shows I've been wanting to watch for quite some time, too, so got the chance to do that. Tuesday afternoon, I attended the May Board of Directors meeting with Ponty Mental Health. I'm on the Finance Oversight Committee, so we had a committee meeting before the actual meeting. That makes sense to go through current financials, updated financials, and a review draft of their twenty twenty six budget. Some items for the general discussion included several new introductions to both the agency and the Board of Directors. Approval of the March meeting minutes, didn't have one in April because they had their annual celebration. Got a Chief Financial Officer's report with Lindsey Miller, who went through the finances and the draft budget for a second time, so I had to hear that twice. Got a Therapy Services Report from Tara Upham and a CCBHC Advisory Board update as well, and a Chief Executive Officers and Marketing Development Report from Mike Raquel, and a full report and review of the March and April twenty twenty five financials from the Finance Oversight Committee, as well as that draft budget I've already mentioned. So finish up the meeting with an executive session on confidential data related to trade secrets, and of course, we'll meet again in June. Tuesday evening, I went back and watched the National Association of Counties' first webinar installment from their Government Affairs Team titled Inside Washington, County Impacts from the White House and Congress, gave an in-depth look at recent federal actions and what impacts they're having, and they continue to have on local units of government, particularly counties moving forward. It did not disappoint. The second one's actually this afternoon. I think I'm gonna watch that one, too, and get some more in-depth information. Last night, I had a roundtable discussion with this group of local constituents. We discussed several topics, including the braising rise in taxes and local fees. Really had a discussion on the local fees part. Interesting considering discussion we're gonna have later, but, um, it was just kind of ironic. I don't know if they'd seen a copy of the agenda or not, but that came up. City and County Reserve Funds, I was kind of out of the left field, too. Cost of Personnel versus Quality of Services Provided and Expectations surrounding those, and of course, the twenty twenty six budget, just to name a few. Had a pretty good civil discussion. Some interesting points were displayed, but you know how those conversations go, so. And it also looked like K-State Athletics had a pretty good week. The baseball team slipped in a regional. And they'll be playing in Austin tomorrow night, I think at seven, against the University of Texas San Antonio Roadrunners. K-State's men's basketball got a, one hell of a transfer, kid from Memphis, second team All-American. He's gonna go in the NBA Draft, supposed to be a lottery pick even, and withdrew his name, and wanted to play for K-State. Keep our fingers crossed for the fall. Then we'll have a really good men's and women's basketball team. A lot to cheer for this year, so that's all I got.
Well, let's see, the weekend, didn't get to do a lot of things I had planned to do because of the rain. But I did, did get a chance to go up and, and at Sunrise Cemetery. I didn't go to the memorial. I didn't want to stand in the rain while they did the memorial, so I just visited some graves.
Going to go myself, and it was just pouring down rain at that time, and I don't have an umbrella, so.
So, um, Tuesday, spent most time, or I spent some time in the office going over materials for a special law board meeting that was held yesterday late afternoon. There were four proposed budgets that had to be reviewed, including the proposed animal control officers issue. Jacob Hanson had prepared and sent out a draft of a letter that we actually sent to the city of Manhattan in opposition of moving the animal control officers from the city to the county. Unfortunately, that, we didn't get that passed. So it went into the budget for the Law Board to include the animal control officers moving to the, to the Police Department. So we were, I have to see, I don't know, that's, we had, we got another, they changed the budget that we had proposed and voted on. We had to go back and rescind that and add the animal control officers in it. Long story short, we went pretty late, went until after six.
So if I understand it right, it's six percent total then with both?
It's close to six, about five point nine, so, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's pretty high, and, you know, we're going to be responsible for the facilities and that, so that's, that's a little issue, but.
I have some thoughts.
The two of us voted against it, but, you know.
Appreciate that.
It was a spirited discussion.
It was very spirited.
Did we cover the medical a hundred percent?
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, yeah, I suppose.
No, not, I mean.
I don't know. That one, I don't, do you recall anything about that?
I mean, they talked about, they put, and RCP's budget included that there.
Yeah, it did.
But we're, then at best, we're paying twenty percent of that, then. At the very least.
Yeah, and the city seemed to think we didn't need to have kennels to, holding kennels, which I don't know where you're gonna put them, run around the office, or what, I don't. It just kind of blew me away, some of the stuff, but anyway. Uh, let's see, Tuesday, oh. Where was I? Oh, yeah, that was, that was Wednesday. Tuesday, I did stop by the Health Department, had a short meeting with Diane Creek. She prepared some documents for the Commissioners to view, but I actually picked up from her because I wasn't gonna be here yesterday. So, anyway. This weekend, tomorrow, I'm gonna go out to Rollins County to attend a memorial service, visit few relatives. Haven't been out for a while. I will be available by phone if needed, so, and whether, whether I can get cellphone coverage way out there, I don't know, but you can try. Anyway, that's all I've got.
Certain ones were better than others.
Yeah, they do. But that's it.
Well, bit of a weekend, got a little bit done out in the yard between the rains. Spent a lot of time looking at the budgets for the Law Board. Tuesday, had lunch with a resident who wanted to discuss, they'd been at that meeting we had about con plan a week or two ago, and had, had a lot of questions of what the plans are, confidentiality plan and the land development regulations about how, how they're structured, what he'd like to see. It was a good, you know, had a good discussion. And after that, we had the construction meeting up on the new facilities. The EMS building is moving right along. If it ever quit raining, they'd get the rest of the concrete driveway forward.
And those signs that they got up on the building are beautiful. I went by there the other day.
Go drive by and check that out.
It's really nice, and nice inside, but it's a nice building. I still, still the end of June, gonna be open. And then we also looked at the new emergency management plans for the old ambulance station. They had the, I don't know if they're quite a hundred percent, ninety percent plans, maybe. It's gonna be a good looking building. There's still discussion on some of the finishes and stuff, but it's gonna, it's, it's gonna be a nice building, too. Clean up that concrete, you're just, it's pretty blah now. It's gonna be really nice.
Gonna redo.
And it's gonna work, the inside's gonna work out quite awful. And then last night, as we said, as Evan said, we had the Law Board meeting. Two different votes, neither one of them went the way I thought it'd go, but we've got the four and a half percent raise for the apartment itself, and another one point two percent had animal control.
I was thinking about alligators. Were they gonna hold those out?
Thing is, we got alligators here. That's, we got, we got.
They did a couple of years ago.
Police Department will have the largest canine unit in the state, probably.
Yeah, that was, Jacob, there was, alligators got loose from the rest of the reptile place down Fort Riley and got into the creek.
They found one, and then they found the other one dead.
Wow.
Kind of wish you'd known that before you moved here.
Which sounds like, just get to know your neighbors, that's all I did say.
There's a creek right behind you.
There is. And actually, I think that where they found one of them, and actually.
They might need to upgrade the firearm.
That's probably the best one.
Um, we can go on to meetings.
First, I have Commissioners approve modifying the specifications for a project and rebidding the project, the TS tipping floor replacement project.
Got questions on that. Why didn't the engineer note that? Why didn't they know he was specing something that was incredibly expensive? He should have. That's one, a single supplier, and it's very expensive. Shouldn't they have known that?
We initially spec'd the more expensive floor and then issued an addenda to include some other floor types. I don't know how much the contractors grasped onto that addenda, and they may have just quoted the more expensive floor. In this, in this new bidding, we will completely remove that other option, most likely, and then specify the cheaper options.
Okay. The engineer should have known, the engineers should know that.
Yes, they, so their initial estimate included that UCO floor, the specific type of floor, and it was, it was quite a bit more expensive. So whenever they issued that addenda, they gave us a new estimate, which was that lower, lower cost.
Okay, well, they'll make a motion to modify the specifications for the project and rebid the project in an effort to get the cost along.
Yeah, I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to modify the specification of the project and rebid it on favor.
Commissioners, any motion to approve public fireworks display permit for Bruce Zimmer and Brad Holler, Randolph Lions Club, July twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Okay, well, I would make a motion to approve the public fireworks display permit for Bruce Zimmer and Brad Holler with Randolph Lions Club. On, was it twenty eighth?
Yeah, June twenty eighth.
June twenty eighth.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the public fireworks display permit for Bruce Zimmer and Brad Holler with Randolph Lions Club, all in favor.
Chair, please sign. Next, Commissioners, any motion to approve the contract agreement with Shilling Construction for the twenty twenty five asphalt overlay?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the contract from Shilling Construction Company in the amount of one million, two hundred and eighty eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety five dollars.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to sign and approve the contract for Shilling Construction in the, in the amount of one million, two hundred and eighty eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety five. All in favor?
Chair, please sign. I'm sorry, Commissioners, and I said chair, please sign on that first one. It's all three of you now.
I thought that was.
Yeah.
Thought maybe I just.
No. The other two, something to do.
Yeah, I get this pin warmed up. Make sure.
Yeah, yeah, just one. Greg's got a lot on that one, though.
Yeah.
You, next, I need a motion on tax rule correction.
I'd make a motion to approve the tax rule correction as presented.
And I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the tax rule correction on favor.
Chair, please sign. Next, Commissioner, I have Rhode County Employee Action Forum's Henry Roddy House, new hire, seasonal labor, Public Works. Here at Hess, new hire, residential appraiser, too, in the appraisers office, Taylor Haas, new hire, childcare provider in the health department. All three, please sign. Need motion, Commissioners, to approve payroll and accounts payable?
I make a motion to approve payroll and accounts payable.
I would second that.
Moved and seconded to approve payroll and accounts payable, all in favor?
Aye.
All three, please sign.
Need to view it and find a question.
We'll plant one next time.
Okay.
Policy breakfast, Commissioners, June nineteenth. All of you want to go, are you here?
June nineteenth, sir. It's Juneteenth.
Oh, really? It is. It's on the, it was on our calendars. I, I, I don't know if we're having it, that's why.
I won't be here. I won't be back till the twenty seventh.
Are you, are you going?
I'll go if they're having it, yeah.
I'm supposed to present.
Oh, you're off.
Oh, I better go, but, yeah, I need to check and see if they're having it.
Yeah, that's a good question.
I'm assuming there'll be no city-county-county meeting, then.
One good thing, um, yeah, I'm not ready for that.
Uh, Jacob?
Yeah, I'll be there.
Okay, any changes to the minutes, Commissioners?
No, I'm going to make a motion into, approve the minutes as written from the May twenty second meeting by the County Commission.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes to the May twenty second meeting as presented, all in favor?
Not tentative agendas, look, Commissioners? Any items for next week's press conference? Actually, Mr. McMillan, bid opening?
No, no.
Oh, no? Benefit districts, then bid opening.
By the way, Commissioners, we were able to confirm that we can move that executive session up.
Okay.
Cancel out that.
Which one is that?
Moving the.
As the last one.
The ten fifth.
We're gonna move that up to ten twenty five.
Okay.
Okay.
It's good that I have a lunch meeting, so that works perfect for me.
There you go.
Fate has a funny way of working.
So we have two executive sessions at that point?
No.
No.
Just one, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, hello again, Commissioners, Evan McMillan, Public Works. So today I have a few benefit district rate increases for your consideration. Um, these are primarily due to rate, or primarily due to rating increases from our water supply suppliers, uh, rising material costs just due to inflation and adjustments in operational expenses. As I had mentioned previously, the county is now doing all the operation for these systems. So. I expect some cost savings there, but as we get into it, we'll know more. Um, the current rate schedules have been updated to account for the depreciation of all the infrastructure assets in all of our districts. I wanted to make sure that we have a good numbers and good reasoning for those numbers. Eve obviously helped a lot with these uh rate studies. So the assets that we're including in these are the lift stations, pumps, uh, water pumps, lagoons, valves, everything like that. And then those are depreciated over their useful life to basically assure that there will be funding for it whenever that, that component goes bad. So. Uh, I wanted to note that this adjustment does not cover the cost of fully replacing a system, so like water mains, we wouldn't, we wouldn't cover that with these rates. If, if for some reason we needed to replace a full system, that would again be probably handled in our new benefit district project. Or reass- reassess a new specials project.
Yeah.
So kind of going through some of the increases, deep creek sewer, cover that first. Uh, the rate is too low and it needs to be increased to start generating capital for future improvements over the last ten years or so. We've been essentially breaking even and uh not really gaining any, that much money in capital to account for the depreciation of the, the uh components and assets. So for this uh rate increase, we're looking about, at about six percent compared to twenty twenty four. Hunter's Island, same thing as deep creek, we just aren't, aren't making the money and not staying afloat like we need to, uh, essentially breaking even. So this rate increase of roughly six percent would be the same, it would allow a further funding for the uh, the infrastructure. And Terra Heights. We have some uh valves that need replaced, so this is basically same thing, accounting for the long-term life of, of these, these systems and ensuring that we have enough money for maintenance replacement. Then we also have uh some potential dredging in the future to uh remove the solids from the lagoon and allow for more. Capacity in the lagoon, along with some other capital projects that will kind of ensure long-term life, the system. So attach some graphs, hopefully they'll be helpful. So the blue here is where we are at, this orange is the minimum recommended balance for these districts. And then green is the max that you want to carry, blue, the light blue is the ideal. So as you can see here, we're kind of towards that, that minimum fund balance, ideally you want to be close to that light blue. So. I guess this e- increase. Potentially compounded with future increases will bring us up to where we want to be. But uh, we will know more as we take over these operations and hopefully save some money. Hunter's Island is a little bit more drastic, see we're below the minimum fund balance, ideally you want to be up here, so that is the reason for the increase on this. And then Terra Heights, same thing, just pretty close to that minimum fund balance and want to get it up a little bit. You guys have any questions or anything? Concerns, feel free to let me know.
Do we have to have a public meeting on this or not?
There will be a public advertisement in the newspaper and then uh we, we let them know well ahead of time, we'll send out messages in the bill saying, hey, this is what's gonna happen, you're potentially gonna have this increase or. When they're notified.
That's when it's going to, yeah.
We'd like it to go into effect June first.
So they'll be notified in the June statements.
Yes.
And then.
It'll go out next.
It'll go into effect in July. Don't we typically give a uh, a month advance notice?
Because like for the water districts, it would be the usage for June, they'd get the statements in July. Which is Hunter's Island, the two sewer districts. It would go affect June first. And that would be their statement amount for that month.
We can also delay that a month if you want to give more of a heads up. That would be good.
Yeah.
I didn't have to do that.
On the budgets, that'd be kind of tough to just throw in.
Sure.
A notice.
We can plan on implementing those in July then.
Yeah.
Send it out.
Give them a month's notice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, like.
I have an interesting motions for two of them, but I don't have any motion for the Hunter's Island one.
Oh, I may have missed that.
So you know, so Commissioners, we need to approve all three motions, all three, the sections. Yeah, they are separate districts.
Oh.
They are separate districts.
So we need three motions?
Yeah, I heard. They move on all three of them, we can fill it out, I don't even have the one for Hunter's Island here, we'll have Cindy add that.
Okay.
There it is. There it's. Who else? No.
Okay.
The first one, Terra Heights.
Well, I'd like to know what my computer's doing here, but.
Okay, so we need to make a motion to approve the rates for um, the Terra Heights Benefit District.
Yes, ma'am.
As presented.
Okay, I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve resolution for uh revising the uh sewer rates for Terra Heights. All in favor?
Aye.
Evan?
It has the June first date on it.
It does.
Can we mark that out, put July, or do you want me to send them back down, Rich?
Uh, just send them back down and then we'll get them to the Commissioners, but Commissioners can do the motions. I did find the third motion, it's up above in another section, so we have all three motions here, but they are separate motions. So yeah, I was wondering that, I was looking for that date and talking about it. So yeah, we'll just get the, need the motions, we can do those, uh.
Sign during business meeting.
You said they say what date?
It says June first on the front page, towards the bottom of some of them.
Yes.
It says July one.
Hunter's Island says July one.
Does.
Yeah, those two say July one, yeah, they all say July one.
Oh, okay.
They all say July one, Commissioners.
So you knew what we were thinking before we thought it, hey?
I'm sure John would have got that right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Take it when I can do it.
So they do all say July one.
Okay. We got Terra Heights. For some reason, I, I can't pull it up, so you're kind of on your own.
Well, I would make a motion to approve a deep creek.
No, it's a.
Uh, deep, deep creek sewer rate, um, uh, as presented.
I'll uh second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve revised deep creek sewer uh rates for the benefit district, all in favor?
Aye.
Then I'd make a motion to approve the revised Hunter's, Hunter's Island water uh rate increase. Uh, as presented.
Okay, I can get that one too.
Been moved to be seconded to approve the Hunter's Island water rates uh revision, all in favor?
Aye.
All three, please sign. All three. Thanks, Evan.
My next time we have to come back with double good news.
Alright. Same I can do.
Thank you.
Right. Hopefully doesn't go over the engineer's estimate.
How many?
I'm trying to picture a seven passenger van though, is there like a jump scene in it?
Let's see, three more.
Three in the back.
How many of them?
Three in the back, yeah, that makes sense.
I know.
Three reds.
So that'd be a primary, oh.
So.
Okay.
I think they added a bunch, but I.
You have.
Three times the number.
I guess I don't ride in no van very often.
Where's that one?
Going through the whole list of names, but I didn't count them until after.
We got one bids.
Yeah.
That'll make it easy.
I was trying to play.
It's minor.
I'm gonna have a hard time making a recommendation on that one, huh?
Yeah, we'll see. Blast one, yeah.
Yeah.
Did they know they were looking at it?
Yeah. Well, three per, huh, okay.
Three times a green.
I didn't either.
Yeah, backwards, on the black side.
Thank you kindly, yeah. Thank you, I'm proud of you. Evan?
Officially making the move over the weekend, Jacob?
Sir. I got Casey out there looking to buy me a lawn mower too, because I get to finally mow my own lawn. We're, that I'm a little excited about that, I haven't had to do that since I lived with my parents, like.
Oh, good.
I was gonna say, he's getting out of my list. Cause it's always raining, everyone's getting, it's never dried out enough, it's winded it, right?
You're looking for a used mower?
Yeah.
The guy at the end of my block on, on the opposite side, he has you, he revive, re- refurbishes lawnmowers and he, he, he'll sell them and take your.
Really?
Yeah.
Well.
He does a good job, yeah. Name is Kenny.
He used to do.
Something, but he lives in the house, um, as you're going towards the park, it's the last one on the left.
Okay.
Street.
Okay.
His name is Kenny, he's usually there, he's retired, there, there's a black pickup, he's there.
Well, my follow, I'll follow up on that one.
Cause a friend of mine just bought one from him and it's, it's really good, it's something, so really in good shape, so.
Yeah, I think Casey may have found one at an estate sale, so we'll see, if that one doesn't work out.
Okay, well, if you need to have it revitalized, do that too, cause I take mine in there every year.
Yeah.
And have him do the, do the blades and tune it up and all that stuff. Huh, I didn't have it done it this year, cause I haven't been.
Hmm, I did it every year.
I usually, it's cause it's.
I've been using that hard, yeah.
Fifty bucks.
Well, there used to be a, a guy in private.
Yeah, nice old side gig for, you know, retirement.
Yeah.
What's your side gig in retirement?
Not mine, but.
Rev- um.
Apparently repairing lawnmowers.
Lawnmower.
Close. There's a huge need for small engine repair.
Yeah. This guy's really good.
That's fun.
Yeah, but he just sold one too. I might have redo mine again, so am I.
Yeah, well, maybe I'll buy it.
I don't, it's, I just have somebody doing it, but I sure don't like to pay for it.
You guys use electric or, or a gas? For lawnmower, gas? I've seen some of those electrics look kind of interesting, but I don't know if I want to mess with that.
I've got a rider.
Oh, yeah.
I've got an acre and a half.
What's that?
I said, I don't have, I've got a rider, oh, they make some electric riders.
Do they really?
Yeah. Got a battery.
It should so. I don't want that thing to uh overheat on your.
Forever, yeah.
Morning.
Good morning.
Anything?
Where they could put those dogs? In that, in. The outside, the outside area for the jail. The guys could run around, people could run around with the animals.
Or they can just buy the property adjacent to it, it's already a veterinarian.
Yeah, for six million dollars.
Yeah.
I hear you guys now have the largest canine unit in the state. The little January per.
Tranche. Uh, I just wondered where you're gonna hold alligators and reptiles that were college kids.
Like certain paws.
Okay.
Or classified, like.
They got the Greek rep behind them.
That's true.
Yeah, there you go.
It's true. Certainly take care of the rodent population.
They think they're doing there on that, that price just went up, now they know we need it.
No, no.
I don't think I got to be in this elevator.
No.
I don't know if we'll.
I think we need to know.
I don't know if it'll pass.
I think all we need is a law.
I don't know if we'll have the, we're gonna pass the final.
Pass the final thing.
Final.
But you passed it already.
Well, no, it has to go through the public and some notice and all that.
Public meeting.
Public meeting.
In June.
Well, college town, you know, you're always got college students with, you know, snakes and reptiles.
Police officers scared you over here as a tortoise, not to talk to anybody's tortoise.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
A little big tortoise, not a little tortoise, yeah, a big one.
It's twenty something years old or something, didn't he say twenty-two years, years old?
Was it?
Yeah. Yeah, it lived for like hundreds of years.
Yeah.
Stains.
Sure.
So big. Well, there, there's a bunch of snapping turtles out, they.
Ah, doesn't sound fun.
I have a bunch of them in my. My creek area.
Upstairs neighbors. Continually trying to calm their parrot off on me, I'm like, I'm, I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good.
Also, those things what live?
They live forever.
They'll outlive me for sure.
Really mean too.
We'll go, yeah. What's it, cockatoo, that's a great big one. The little said, they've got it in their will because they said they'll outlive them, those things last live and be yours or something.
You know, I.
Get that whichever similar adult like, yeah.
Some wills and proits and trusts where when the owners die, they euthanize the animal. As well, some people do that, they're like, yeah.
The same time.
At the same time, it's uh interesting.
Huh.
Yeah, believe it or not.
There's a rainbow bridge together.
I guess. Yeah, you tend, I tend not to ask questions and just write down what they want.
I'm sure you get some space, it'd be interesting.
There are, yeah. Um, it was an interesting life.
Back when you were ruthless.
Yeah.
I heard the one story. Yeah.
Just the messenger.
You've heard.
What's the?
Nancy's joke. Oh, I don't know. You said it in wills, but I.
You know, I have never been more excited for a bid opening. Are we ready to go then? Okay, so we've got a bid opening here for a seven passenger van. And uh, got one, one bid and that's from Kia of Manhattan. Where is that at? It's on a port drive, it's out this way.
Port drive? Port Drive.
Is that what? Like formerly known as Dick Edwards. It's gone through like four. It's gone through like four renovations now here in the last like decade.
Port Drive I just. Hour twenty four.
No, that's it. Well. How they got.
Okay, let's see what we got here. Okay, um. One seven passenger van with delivery to Raleigh County Public Works. Not that that's gonna. Need go pick it up. I mean, it's not a big deal, right? Um, estimated delivery date is sixty to ninety days. That's come down from where we used to be. And total bid price I'm showing here is thirty nine thousand, six hundred and eighty eight dollars. I didn't. See what type of van.
Yeah.
That is. Ah, here we go.
Got seven seats in it.
Yeah.
Seven passenger.
Yes, seven passengers that have eight.
Um, it's a twenty twenty six Carnival LX. That a Kia? That a Ford? That's what I saw there too.
Scrabble is.
Okay. Now I know.
That is a Kia.
Is a Kia.
Yeah. You just looked it up?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have any other Kias in our stock? I don't think we do, do we?
Not that I know of.
First time for everything. Okay. There you go.
It for the seven passenger van. From Kia of Manhattan for a price of thirty nine thousand, six hundred and eighty eight dollars.
Now is this for, is this for uh what replacing one or is this an addition?
Yes, it's replacing the one that we currently have down here.
Okay. Alrighty. So do we need to send this back for review or?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd make a motion to um send the bid we received from Kia on seven passenger van. Back to the uh department for further review and recommendation.
A second.
They moved and seconded to send the bids back to staff for review and recommendations. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next commissioner is Amanda Webb at nine twenty five.
This is gonna be a hard decision.
You get that email from Elizabeth. You get the email from Elizabeth. Are we ready for that?
Well, I'm gonna have a response.
Well, yeah.
No responses.
Yeah. You're gonna straighten things up.
How's Amanda?
Doing okay. How are you?
Good.
Rich, did you, do you keep the bid sheets that we?
I keep one. No, I I keep one. That's just.
Okay.
Another month done.
Yeah, it's so spring weather. It just doesn't seem like it's the end of May.
You can sure feel the humidity though back in the in the air. Even though the temperature's not up yet.
Go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. Amanda Webb, Planning Director here with the monthly comprehensive plan update report for you. Happy to share some different things that have been going on for the last several weeks. And I'm always happy to be able to include visuals in your packet as well. So we'll jump right into talk about the um existing condition study in the community workshop um that we had on May fourteenth at Potter of Paul. Um, Stan Tech put together the existing condition study that is on our website. I have it there a couple of different ways. Again, just really to make sure people have that information on to where where it is, where to get it. Um, it is there on our website. It has um all the information. Again, it's called the existing study, existing condition study, and that's of course exactly what it is. It tells us where we are right now. What's our population? What's our demographics? Um, what's our current land use capacities and? Um, housing, economic conditions, et cetera, all of that. So. If you haven't had a chance to take a look at it, it's there. A lot of good information. Um, and again, it is out there. Um, for the public to review, and I have gotten a few comments from the public. So I'm glad that people are taking a look at it and and giving me that input. Um, again, the May fourteenth community workshop was um to cover that existing condition study. Um, I also included in your packet um the memo that Stan Tech provided to me that summarized the workshop. Um, I do have a sign in sheet. Of course, I didn't include it in your packet, but of course, as you can see that information, I have it. Um, according to the sign in sheet and their memo, there was about twenty eight people there. I'm always hoping for more, but happy to get who we. Um, I will say that there was a lot of kind of our regulars, if you will, but there were several new faces. That honestly, I hadn't seen before, hadn't been at any of our meetings. Um, so it's really happy to do that. Happy to get some new people there. Um, I got some good um feedback about the workshop. Stan Tech put on a PowerPoint presentation, which is also available on our website, the Comprehensive Plan Update website. Um, that's there for people to review as well. And then there were several activities that not everybody participated in, but as you see in their memo, um, they kind of outlined how many people of those attendees. Participated in each um activity. Um, you can also see a picture of the map. They had a kind of a big easel with a. Large map of the county as again, you can see in their in their memo. And we asked people to put the little stickers of where they're from. Now you'll see there's different colors. That's just the stickers they were handed. It doesn't mean anything. Doesn't mean, you know. Any anything different. All the stickers are the same, just where each of the people who participated in that activity came from. Um, as you can see, we have pretty good um distribution of folks from around the county. So again, while we always want more, as many people as possible, I want to say it that way. It was nice to see that we had a pretty good, again, distribution across the county of attendees at the meeting. So. I think that was a really good way to show where people are coming from and and that we had that um. You know, we had that distribution there. So. Um, a couple of other activities that they did, they called it Riley Bucks, and you can see in a couple of the pictures there, basically there were different buckets for um different. Things that people thought we as in the county or really you folks should be allocating our limited funding towards. Um, and in their memo for they um outlined what those different categories were. There was also one write in, as you can see, and then kind of how each um person spent their three dollars. So everybody was given three dollars, you know, to represent whatever denomination you, you know, you not, you'd want, you know, three million or three, you know. Just to basically say, okay, here's here's your limited funds and here's your buckets. Where do you think that our funds should be allocated?
That's cool.
So, yeah, yeah.
Good idea.
Yeah, it was.
Get much for three dollars.
But at least it can kind of help us do this. People are thinking are their priorities. And you can see and and again, in the memo that Stan Tech put together, kind of how that all. Outline and where people's, you know, wanted to spend quote unquote, the most money and and whatnot. So. That was a really helpful activity for folks to be able to um, you know, again, kind of show us what their what their priorities and interests are. So. And then the other activity that they did, they called it a six word. What was it called? Six word story. Um, where basically they were just kind of given, and you can see a couple of pictures there, just a little card um where people could write. Six words of of whatever they wanted. Um, there was a couple that went over the six word limit, but that's okay. Again, it's it's still all about getting input. Um, so and they summarize in their memo the different um. Stories that we received from the people who participated in that activity. And then we also um strung them out kind of on the wall. So anybody who wanted to could also see what other people were saying as well. So. Again, not everybody who attended participated in each of the activities. Again, perfectly fine, but um we did get some good participation there. Um, again, they gave their presentation, a lot of good questions, a lot of good conversation. Lot of some of the same stuff, you know, we have heard, um, you know, so we know that that's some of the, you know, bigger. Topics that people people want to talk about. I'm not sure if Commissioner McKinley had, you know, kind of had gone over anything that you heard there yet or whatnot. Uh, but um again, a lot, a lot of the same kind of kind of stuff we've heard. Um, but again, it's always good to to get that input. So I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add.
One of the, one of the attendees. Called me for lunch Tuesday to go over some stuff. I'll talk to you later on.
Good. Yeah, thank you for being there. Um, so again, that was all in all, it was, it was pretty successful. Um, I had sent. Notification out of the meeting. Again, we we talked about it for quite a while before. Um, I sent notification to about three hundred and fifty plus email addresses that I have. Really with a lot of this, we do have to kind of rely on some word of mouth. I unfortunately, I would love to be able to call people and and put a, put a notice in everybody's mailbox across the county, but. Unfortunately, we know that that's just not necessarily possible with all of this. When we did our community meetings in twenty twenty three with the townships. We did, we did do that. Um, so I collected a lot of contact information over that time. You know, from my different committee members and from attendees at the different meetings, from people who wanted to be on the listserv. Um, just all kinds of different contacts. And so I sent all of that out to them. And I do know that there were some people who were probably heard about it from their neighbor or from, you know, somebody else. So. Um, again, that's that's kind of a little bit how we have to do some of this, just talking about it all the time and asking other people to keep talking about it as well to help us out. So. Um, so we're probably gonna have, it's not scheduled yet and it's not finalized yet, but probably another um community workshop in the Julyish range. Um, we'll be kind of figuring that out here soon. And then another one later in the fall. So there's still opportunity again that will have these these workshops for folks to attend. Um, and as I always like to say, there's till the very end, there's opportunity for for public input, public engagement and this, you know, that's that's what we want to do through this. So. Um, so just moving along here. Um, so our subcommittees, they are pretty much wrapping up their work. Um, the. Stan Tech provided draft goals to the Economic Development Infrastructure and Agricultural Land Use Subcommittee for them to kind of work from. Each of these groups, we have final meeting scheduled next week. Um, so we can kind of finalize those draft goals. I know it's weird saying finalized draft, but. They're still draft until, of course, everything comes before our our boards and of course you folks to um, you know, make sure they're they're working for Riley County and we we adopt everything. So. Um, but I want them to do, you know, kind of finalize the draft goals so we can release those out to the public. And then, of course, have those conversations with you folks as well. Um, Parks and Rec um Subcommittee, they had actually done pretty good on their own um crafting some of their own goals. So we're. We're also gonna work to kind of finalize those. There was a couple of things they wanted to finish up talking about as well. Um, the Health Subcommittee had had kind of done the same. They made some pretty good progress towards some draft goals that will probably do one more meeting to finalize those. Um, Stan Tech is working on some draft goals for the Housing Subcommittee to consider. And hopefully I'll have those within the next couple of days and can get a meeting scheduled, a final meeting with the housing group scheduled by mid-June and have those um taken care of. Um, and again, once all of that is kind of settled, if you will, it'll be released out publicly for comment and review and of course discussed with you folks as well. Um, to make sure it's it's kind of aligning with with again, what the community wants and what you folks might be thinking as well. Um, stakeholders, we've been working on um that group for a while and continue to do so. Again, it's just all about getting as much input as we can. Um, we've talked to all the school districts, um, which I was glad for. I appreciate their um interest and and, you know, giving us their information. We, as as mentioned, and some of this is a little bit of a repeat from last month, you know, some of the conversations we've had with the small cities, I went ahead and left. Some of that summary of the conversation in here that I'd let you know about last month, just so, you know, it it stays fresh in your mind, some of the things we've heard from the small cities. We've talked to Riley, Leonardville and Ogden, and I've also talked more in depth with Riley and Leonardville about their designated growth areas. There's um, these areas are already defined in Vision twenty twenty five, and of course, through this update process, we're making sure, do they still work? Do they need to be amended in any way? And the other bigger kicker is we're probably going to be identifying other areas that aren't necessarily just attached to the cities. That would be useful to identify as a new growth areas as well. Um, so Riley, um, she's had a lot of good conversations with her council. And with her planning um commission, got a lot of good input on there and they're feeling good about that. Um, Leonardville as well. So just just kind of waiting for them to. Um, you know, let me know for sure what they're thinking, if they want to make any changes to the current ones. Um, Ogden the same, I just need to follow up with her over there, make sure she's comfortable with what what's shown or if they want changes. And Randolph, they talked to um Stan Tech yesterday. We're gonna plan to go to their June City Council meeting on. I don't know, whatever the second Wednesday is in in the month. We'll go up there, um, cause we just, we we haven't had, you know, luck getting in contact with them, but it's still really important that we connect with them. So. We'll go on up there. And chat with them and and get their thoughts on their existing designated growth area, how they might want things to change. And again, all the same things we've been talking to the small cities about, what are their input? What do they need from this comp plan update? All of that. So. Um, we'll do that in June and I'll have more information for you with my next, next update. So. Um, and then we still just have this list of folks that we've been working on. Um, some, you know, we've we've reached out to everybody, some just haven't. You know, necessarily been able to respond to us and and we know that that just happens sometimes. There's a few folks that I have questions out there and I've asked everybody to send those um by the end of this month. So hopefully I'll have a good um influx of of responses um in the next few days that we can add to our our list. Um, let's see. Just kind of looking through here what to, what to talk about. Um, do you have any questions on any of that? I know I've just been kind of. Going along and want to make sure there's time for any questions or any other thoughts you folks might have. I will, I will present to the Intergovernmental Luncheon Group um next month. I don't know yet. Vivian had asked me if I wanted the whole time. I said I could, I could easily fill the whole time or I could share it. So I'm not sure. Um, if I'm sharing yet or not, either way is perfectly fine, but um. Um, I will be on that agenda for next month and kind of talk about what we're up to with this. The other thing we've talked about is the plan logo, the the logo title tagline, and I know a couple of months ago, we. Um, you know, tossed around some um, you know, ideas that we had had, that we had had the logo survey on. And you just kind of asked for some different. You know, different suggestions, different options, and that's something Stan Tech is working on to give us some options for you folks to look at. Um, at a future meeting, but just kind of want to keep that on your radar, just be thinking about. So. Um, and I think that's probably pretty much it. Again, happy to answer any questions or if there's any comments you have or. Um, you know, any thoughts you might have. Maybe hear those as well. Um, but just glad to, glad to say that we're we're moving along, we're we're doing, you know, doing a lot with this and it's just nice to be in the thick of it and and really getting things going. So. Um, lots more to come and but as always, let me know if you have any questions on anything. Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda. Next commissioner, yeah, Megan Lewis at nine forty five.
Hi, Kristen. Can you hear us? Okay?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay, and we can hear you too. Very good.
Okay.
Roust up a crowd, don't you?
Lots of supporters.
How's Megan?
Good.
Good.
I'm just planning that it's a short week though.
Huh?
I am not complaining that it was a short week though.
Yeah, I went to Indy five hundred for the first time. It was, it was pretty interesting. They move a lot quicker than it looks like on TV.
For sure.
Yeah, a little bit. It was off and on, which is kind of frustrating because if it rains a little, they have to basically dry the track and that takes forever.
How many hours?
So I think if I remember right, it started at twelve forty-five. It was supposed to start at twelve forty-five and I think we didn't get out until like. Three, five?
Five.
Yeah, it was a long time. And plus the bleachers that they have, they have no bags for it. So you have to like rent out like specialized chairs or bring your own. All that like providing bags and everything. So that's.
So we've been a little bit.
Yeah, you would thought. I mean, you, there was probably those seats around there, but whether or not you want to pay that kind of price. Yeah.
That's what I was saying.
It was, it was neat. Casey heard, heard families from around there. Uncle.
This wasn't her first time.
No, it wasn't her first time. It was great. Yeah, there's.
Oh, this is nice. I wish it was like this every day.
Got reinforcements.
Good morning, Commissioners. Megan Lewis, Director of Community Corrections, and we are here this morning to talk about our Recovery Court program and our funding situation currently. I'm, I'm going to start by letting Judge Lewisson talk about the background of Recovery Court. Okay. All right. Okay. Good morning, Chairman McKinley, Commissioners, Mr. Vargo, Mr. Hanson, and all of our community members that have come today to support us. Thank you for your continued commitment to the safety, health and prosperity of Riley County. And we are here to ask for your support for a program that protects our community. It saves taxpayer dollars and it restores lives, our Recovery Court Program. I, I'm supposed to cover a little bit of history. I think we've heard most of this, but we did form this group back in early two thousand twenty, late nineteen maybe to try to start this, this program. And it is a cooperative effort on the part of a lot of different agencies that would at some point in time be involved in the lives of these probationers. But in this program, we all come together and work as a team and meet weekly and staff the cases and have a docket where we have a one-on-one time with the participants. So let me just quickly run through who all's involved. Raise your hand if you're one of these people. The court, we have Judge Bosch also here. He is the other presiding judge over drug court. We have Ponti mental health services. Riley County Police Department is involved. We have a few of those and Riley County Attorney's Office. And then, I'm sorry, Megan, I'm going to go totally off script now. Then we have Riley County Community Corrections. So stand up Andrew, Brett, the other Brett, Jesse, Sandy. Did I get everyone? All right. Okay. You guys can sit down. I, I just have to take a few moments to talk about them. I mean, these are the hardest working people that I know. They are tough as nails, but they're empathetic at the same time. They are experienced. They're very, very good at their jobs. They inspire and motivate their probationers and then while at the same time, they're holding them accountable. And that's really a hard balance to strike, but they do it so well. There is no place in this county on any given day where you will find more people that have committed felonies than up in their office, except for maybe the courthouse on Mondays, where we also have a lot of folks. But so I, I don't know that people fully appreciate in the community what they do for us and that they basically form a human wall between these individuals who've been convicted of felonies in our community. You know, the, the jail provides another service of, of providing a physical wall between them and us, but we would like to make the case that, that, that human wall is the more effective, compassionate and, and cost-saving way to do that. The physical walls are also very, very, very important for some people, but for the people that participate on our program, having that, that human wall of our court and community corrections is what we believe you should consider funding and supporting. Let's see, we did start back in, I'm supposed to give a little history, so let me do that. We had our first docket, I believe in March of two thousand twenty-two. The, the program is really based on providing constant accountability. We do UAs every day of the week. Community Corrections gives up their weekends to come in on Saturdays and Sundays. We do home visits. We do curfew checks. We, we literally have contact with people on a weekly basis, the court itself, in addition to community corrections. And it, it's just a whole nother level of accountability and a, that is beneficial and just a different approach. And I probably don't have time to really get into that a whole bunch, but it's, it's just different. And it's specifically designed for high-risk, high-need offenders. Those are the ones that are in the program, not all probationers, but high-risk, high-needs offenders. And for them, the science says that this program is effective if you follow the best practices, which we have been very, very careful to follow. So I kind of want to get into some other stuff. So if anything on the history you think I need to get into, okay. All right. So as of yesterday's graduation ceremony, we have graduated twenty-five participants from our court, which we are very proud of. So I want to talk about a few benefits to the program. One is improved public safety. They, our participants are very closely supervised. They're regularly tested. They're held accountable and, and that enables them to be successful. We had two participants yesterday that graduated that between the two of them had more than one thousand continuous days of sobriety, maybe closer to eleven hundred. So that's really amazing, but they don't just get sober. They graduate in recovery, which I didn't think, I, I didn't really understand the difference between the two until I started getting training. But, but being in recovery is a different, a different level of sobriety and it enables them to be successful and continue on with their sobriety long after they leave the court. Research shows that Recovery Court significantly reduce recidivism and, and I think the average is about forty-five, that graduates are forty-five percent less likely to reoffend than those who go through the traditional system. So what that means for the community is fewer crimes, fewer victims and a safer county. One of my favorite things about Recovery Court is that it restores families. It reunites parents with their children. It stabilizes homes and it, it gives kids their moms and dads back. The ripple effect, that has a ripple effect on schools, on foster care, on community services. When a person is in recovery, their whole family heals. So more than, I, I tried to kind of add it up in my head. I know more than twenty percent of our participants over the course of time have been parents to minor children. Three of our participants have gotten their children back from the custody of the state while they were in Recovery Court. So they've earned the opportunity to have their kids back in their custody while they were on our court. Many others have regained their right to parenting time with their children that they otherwise would have been denied by their co-parent because they really weren't safe to be around their children or they had broken those relationships. One of our, our participants became a father while he was on the court. We have two right now that are going to become fathers while they're on the court. So I say that to you because I think that the benefits that we see in Recovery Court will be multiplied with future generations. We help one person on Recovery Court and they have two or three children, five or however many children, we are multiplying our, our success with those future generations. I do want you to consider that it is a smart use of taxpayer money. It's far less expensive than incarceration. I'm told by, well, Captain French told me this morning, twenty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars to incarcerate somebody in our jail. And that's not even including some more subjective things like how much we're spending to provide medical, medical care if they have a medical condition that needs treatment. That's a lot of money. That's more than half of what it costs to put somebody through Recovery Court. So that's money saved. You can save money and change lives at the same time. I can't imagine a better choice than that. It does reap returns other than the ones I've mentioned with families, but it, our graduates become employed. I don't have statistics off the top of my head, but I think you have some. So I'll let you give those about how many participants we had that were not employed when they started and were employed in good lucrative tax-paying jobs when they completed our court. Our graduates, our graduates become housed when they weren't before. They become taxpaying citizens. They stop draining emergency resources. They start contributing to the economy. And we've had three graduates who have chosen to work in the field of recovery. We have at least one of them here today. Thank you. Raise your hand. There we go. So when you talk about multiplying your investment in people, we've got three people out there and who have chosen to work in the field of recovery and every person that they help, we are multiplying that investment. We have several success stories that are right here in this room, here to support us today. People that vote, that work, that are thriving thanks to Recovery Court. I, I know you have a lot of tough choices. I know there's groups around town that have lost their federal funding and I, I don't take it lightly that you have a lot of tough choices and that you want to make, be good stewards of the money of the taxpayers of Riley County. But Recovery Court, it just can't be denied. It's smart on, on crime. It's a smart way to address the problem. It delivers safer streets, stronger families and at the same time doing it with fiscal savings. You may be spending money on our program, but it's going to, going to be saving money later. What did you want me to talk about that I didn't address?
You did great.
All right. Well, I think I've taken up more than the time I was allotted. So does anyone have any questions for me?
The, on the grant situation, the one you have now is going to end this year, September thirtieth.
Yes.
And is there any chance that that's going to be reallocated or?
It's really a grant. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt.
Well, I know the federal government's cutting a lot of programs.
This one, if I remember, I was here in nineteen when we were discussing this. This was going to be just a one-time thing. So it's not part of the current. The timing is what it is, but it was not part of the original federal cuts. It was just a one-time thing.
Correct. There's a lot of grants out there that are designed to help people start the courts. And then after five, four or five years of getting data and proving that you can do it and that you can follow the best practices, then I think the expectation is that hopefully community or there, there'll be support to fund it from there. So lots of money to start the court, not a lot of money to sustain it. Once you get through that initial period of starting the court. All right. Absolutely. Anything else?
Nope. Thank you. So Judge Lewisson covered a lot of what I was going to talk about. I did, I do want to touch base on the unemployment rate. So we have five different phases in Recovery Court. And in the first phase, we have seen an average of forty-five percent of our participants are unemployed when they come into the program. And upon graduation, that goes down to twelve percent. So they're definitely out there contributing to our community, taxpaying citizens and working. So I did want to touch on that. I will let Mr. Wilkerson come next because she kind of covered my foot. Thank you.
I know I've submitted some written testimony, but I did want to come in here and ask the Commission to, to fund this program. I do, I've been doing this for thirty-five years as of August first of this year. And I've, I've seen a lot of things come and go. I, I do think that we have a, we have a, a growing drug problem, not a shrinking one at, at this point. Looking at, at reports, it's much more prevalent than it was when I started on August first of nineteen ninety. But what I've witnessed in, in my career and believe me, I put several people in prison for selling drugs and Mark French and Luke Rowe, well, Judge Lewisson was a drug prosecutor in Johnson County before she came here. So, you know, we know, you know, I think we have some experience. You know, we know that there are, there are people out there that are, are selling and causing misery and we need to deal with those individuals more harshly. But what we haven't really addressed for years are, are the, are people that become addicted. It is, it, it's a struggle going before a judge one time and having the judge say, you know, don't do this again or else, you know, we're going to incarcerate you in jail. We're going to put you in, in Department of Corrections. This is a problem we can't incarcerate our way out of. Because there's, there's, then there's no support. I've watched people come out of, out of either a county jail or out of the Department of Corrections and not have, there's, there's no programs. There's no programs to, you know, what was, what they were given while in custody wasn't adequate to address the addiction. Sure, it got them off the street for a little bit of time, but it didn't address the addiction. It didn't help them develop any life skills that are necessary so that they can, you know, not just survive, but, but actually thrive once they've been, once they've been through the court process. You know, we've tried and with some success, a diversion program. You know, we've tried and with some success, a diversion program several years ago when Judge Lewis was still in the county attorney's office. A diversion program that, so we could keep people really out of prison that, that may have otherwise have, have gone. And even in those circumstances that were successful, we see that it is a, it's a struggle for people and there are, you know, there, there, there are going to be relapses. But what you really need to have in order to, you know, in my view, you have to look, you'd have to take the long view. You can't just take, you know, short-term results and that means there are going to be, there are going to be relapses, there are going to be issues here. But if we have a support network that I think Recovery Court has provided where there is, you know, there's weekly, they have, they have Recovery Court. So there's, you know, somebody that is providing oversight for, for people that are in a Recovery Court program. It's, and it's not, I, I've sat through it. It's not, you know, you just don't come in there for five minutes and out the door you go. I mean, it's, it's, it's an afternoon process. And there's, you know, there's support from community corrections officers or support from the court. In my opinion, there's support from the police department. And there's also, there's a peer component to it because there are other people in there that are in the same situation and it's much different than Narcotics Anonymous or Alcoholics Anonymous. There are real, there are real consequences. And you know, you can kind of see when you're in there, the people that accountability within, you know, I'm recovering, you can do this too. And I, I do think that this is the best program in thirty four years that I've had seen. I'm starting to get long-winded, but this is the best. The best program I've seen in my career in the thirty four, thirty five years, I guess. On August first, thirty five years, this is the best program that I've seen as far as being able to treat addiction, being able to let people not just, you know, get off probation and go about their business, but allowing people to, to thrive and really kind of turn their lives around and make a difference. And I do think it's worth the investment from the local taxpayers. Because when you have people that have, aren't addicted, they're in recovery, they've got, they're getting jobs. I talked to a young man this morning that just bought a house. Whether, when you see those kinds of things going on, they're, they're becoming positive contributors to the community. That's, that's an investment that's, that's worth making. And so I would certainly ask the, you know, commission to, to support this investment. We're reducing crime, we're helping people turn their lives around and I think that is really what we should be all about. So I'd stand for any questions and I can be available later as well if you have any, any follow-up. Certainly I support this program a hundred percent, but ask you to do, do the same.
Commissioners, we're about out of time, so I'm going to kind of jump to the, the bottom line here. So we're here today, the, the program is set to end without funding on September thirtieth. And so to get not only to the end of twenty twenty five, but also the following twelve months. The total cost of that, the maximum cost of that would be two hundred and forty seven thousand three hundred and seventy eight dollars and forty two cents. What I can tell you is we have conversations right now going with our CPD in the jail. And Mr. French is here today and discussing how we can bring down our drug testing costs so that we can bring that total down for our weekend overtime that our staff currently is getting paid. We have communications in the works with, with bids with the Kansas Board of Indigenous Services to see if there's anything we can do to get those costs down. I've been in communication with the county sheriff's department. We have already presented once to their commissioners there to utilize some opioid settlement funds. And we've also reached out to the, the city of Manhattan and I did receive a response from Mayor McCullough. And I also have an appointment scheduled with the city manager on June twelfth. So we definitely have things that are in the works trying to get that total number down. And we're hopeful that the first thing we'd like to do is utilize the opioid settlement funds. And then, and hopefully from not just Riley County, but the city of Manhattan. And then potentially after that, there, there may be an amount, there, there most likely will be an amount that we would like to see if we could get appropriations for.
I just clarifying about what the whole program is. Is this, do they go into this after they come out of jail or is it instead jail?
So this is in lieu of prison, basically. So if they have an underlying sentence when they are sentenced in court and they have the opportunity to go through our Recovery Court program and be in our community and have access to all the resources that Recovery Court offers. And be able to see the judge every week and have the support system that you see here and these individuals rally around them and connect them to services and help them. So that is, that is instead of going to prison. They still can go to prison if they choose not to, to do the program and follow the rules, they still have that option. But this is in lieu of prison.
Oh, I would just add that most of these people would have been on probation anyway. It just would have been a regular probation. So they would, they would already be supervised by community corrections. Just not with the extra accountability, the, the extra coming to court every week, the team approach that we do with, with drug court.
However, they all have an underlying sentence.
But they all have an underlying sentence. If they fail in our program, they'll go to prison.
But you said they're on probation, which is that, that's who you usually see in corrections anyway, right? But this is just a more intensive than what you guys usually do.
Yes.
Standard is they just see you guys once a week.
Well, they're, so they, they have a risk needs assessment and that determines how often they see us. And in the Recovery Court program, they are in front of a judge every week. So there's, there's just a higher level of accountability. And most individuals don't want to disappoint that judge once they develop that relationship. You can kind of see our past participants nodding. That's, it's a big deal.
Otherwise they go back before a judge if they violate probation or something like that. So they may not see a judge again for five, six months.
How, how are people selected for this program instead of the regular program?
It's, it's based on that needs, that need, I risk needs assessment. It's a very, very scientific and very strict political process. Different people need different tiers of help based on their risk needs assessment. The county attorney's office has a lot of success with their diversion program. That's for a different population of people. That's for the folks that have family support. Those are for the folks that have an education, that have maybe some more resources. Ours is specifically people high risk, high needs and, and there, there's an assessment instrument that they use. A series of questions that are asked and scored for us to figure out who the right people are in our program.
Who, who's more likely to benefit from it? Is that?
Yeah, and who's at higher risk for reoffending. So we're taking the people that are at the highest risk to reoffend. And then, you know, one, one of the reasons that this is successful is I don't see them on a normal probation until, until community corrections is so fed up that they feel like they can't do anything more and they need to go to jail for a sanction or they need to go to prison. But with, with me being able to see them every week, I mean, some of these individuals have never had any positive feedback from a person in authority before, ever in their life. And so, yeah, we do, we do some prizes and some things like that, but we, and we clap on their sobriety date, but, but I can give them positive feedback. You did this right. Good job. You're on the right track. Thank you for doing the work. Thank you for putting in the work. And it's, it's effective. It really is. It's very effective.
One other thing that I want to make sure that we mention is these individuals also have what we call Senate Bill one twenty three funding for alcohol and drug treatment. So there was a period of time in our program where we had a different grant where we could allow a few participants in that didn't have that funding. However, once that ended, we now only accept Senate bill funded clients.
Which means that the states for their treatment, which is a huge expense that the state is picking up that we don't have to worry about. Would we like to have a little bit of money to send people, to accept people that don't qualify for Senate Bill one twenty three? We would, but we've accepted the fact that at this point, we can only take the people that have their treatment paid for by, by the state.
That's in addition to this.
So, so Senate Bill one twenty three funding, that money doesn't come to us. They, they go to a treatment provider and that provider bills the state. They build that through the Kansas.
Yeah, that number would be a lot bigger, huge, if we were including the treatment.
This allocation with that, I'm trying to figure out how that would work if, if it comes out of several different departments in the county or if it's going to be in one category or how.
I'm trying to figure that out too because in mid-budget year, I don't know where we're going to quarter of a million dollars run at this point in time.
No, but it's, most of that's for next year, correct?
Yeah, it's just, just the rest of the year from September, December.
Yeah, it's, that was a question I had.
Yeah.
But I don't know.
What happens after the fifteen months?
Yeah, I was just going to mention that Megan has worked with Brittany throughout this whole process. And so they have a, a plan if they, if it would come out of the opioid fund. Brittany would then reassess the appropriations and give you a new proposal. So she would bring you that information. She just wasn't able to be here today and we weren't sure that you were open to us, you know, making that proposal. So those numbers and exactly where it would come from and how it would work out will be presented to you if you decide to move forward.
This isn't
The total amount of what.
Final approval, this, this, beginning of the discussion. Doesn't start until October and I appreciate the advance notice instead of coming in September thirtieth and say, hey.
Tomorrow. And a part of that I really want to stress is this is the absolute largest budget authority that they would be asking for. So she has commitments. She just doesn't have numbers. So she has commitments from several organizations to help financially, but she doesn't have the numbers yet. So we decided to come with you, to you with the amount that we would, the highest amount we would want to ask for and expecting that to be lower than that. So you kind of can plan on that.
We will have financials.
Yeah, she's working on this daily. So I know she's had, she's had meetings with several people just even this week. And I think you again are going to talk with Major French today. And so, yeah, yeah. She's working on it regularly, but we wanted to get the idea in front of you, make sure you are supportive of discussing it, working on it, moving forward. Potentially using opioid funds for some amount of that appropriation.
And, and the city also has, has said they'd like to know what Riley County is willing to consider before they're willing to make a decision on there. And I think you've probably heard those situations before.
We have quarterly policy meetings and we just had a quarterly policy meeting and we sat down and went through every line item like, who? Okay, everybody bring your laptops. We're not making photocopies anymore. We can save on photocopies. We can, we found a less expensive training is very, very important, but we found a less expensive option through Missouri's state organization that we can go to instead of the national convention. That'll save us a lot of training money. So we've, we've really gone through and got to the point where I asked if they'd be willing to do the UAs without, without gloves. And they said, nope, that's going too far. We're not going to do that. So, but anything that we can do that's not going to compromise the quality of the, of the program, we're going to do that to try to save costs. We don't have the luxury of going to the national conference that we had when we had funding to do that. So.
I like, yeah, I think it's a really good.
Keep knowing, but it's what this is about. I mean, it's kind of giving us background of what it is you're talking about, but there's still details to be worked out, which I'm happy with proceeding, you know, keep going.
I think we need to know first about the opioid settlement funds and, and if we are going to be able to access them, what potentially you're comfortable with us utilizing.
Prizes, you know that you've lost this funding. And so you need to know if they're willing to have us present a proposal for opioid funding. Yeah. I mean, they, they were looking for your support for this program financially and we don't have the exact number. But if you support it, we will put the exact number, we'll keep, you know, getting those community resources, get their exact numbers and then come to you with what exactly we're asking for, for the, from the opioid funding.
I do think unfortunately the city is going to continue to have the same position. They want a decision here before they like a decision.
Well, Brittany and you, that's usually not the way that they work.
No, yeah. Might leave that one alone right now.
It's too raw.
Timing can be.
My timing is terrible, isn't it?
But Brittany and Megan have negotiated with the other counties and they'll negotiate the same way and say, okay, if you, you know, this is a portion of the population. This is a portion of the rest of the population, you know, can we talk about you giving this percentage and us giving this percentage? So same kind of concept that we've done with our other services and.
We just need to, I need to see numbers.
Yeah, yeah. But so as long as you're supportive and you believe this is a potential use for the opioid, opioid, then we will continue to negotiate that.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any other questions before we clear out of your room?
Mark's going to be offended. He thinks everyone's.
Thank you, Commissioners. Mark's doing good work. He's doing really good work. Everybody.
Thanks all.
Thanks everyone.
Commissioners.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Well, I'm glad you're, glad you're here. Yeah.
Make sure we give a.
I think we can find some other communities.
We always find money for stuff somewhere. It takes a lot of work for this.
We went to one of those graduations, I guess it was last night.
Are you ready?
Commissioners, you ready for Mark?
Yeah. Mark French, major with the Riley County Police Department. I gave you a folder. And in that folder is a document I wanted to talk about. Basically, if you get the invoice, and I didn't put the invoice in the PowerPoint, it should be a thing going. It's an invoice amount for eleven thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. And what this invoice is, what it's tossed in the Riley County law enforcement agency that houses outside of Riley County. Now, we're currently utilizing three facilities, Washington County, Dickinson County and Potawatomi County. And I want to give a background as to why I believe this is a facility issue. And it is very difficult because we don't have a line item budget for this. Because it really isn't something that we anticipated would go on this long. So the first thing I'd like you to look at is the one labeled a, average daily population. And we're in a stretch right now, eight months in a row where we're over a hundred and twenty inmates. And then I wanted to talk a little bit more about ADP. Some of you do and some don't understand that ADP is a number we utilize on average daily population. That number is designed for our ACH healthcare contract. But we renegotiated that recently. You guys added sixteen hours more nursing.
Yeah.
If you remember. But there again, we get hit with a penalty when we exceed what our contract is for our ADP. Before that, the contract was ninety, I believe. We renegotiated to a hundred and ten with full expectation that our numbers would come back down. You can see that has not happened yet. I'm saying it's not going to happen. I really can't tell you why the numbers are high on just one particular reason. But just the mere fact that we've gone eight months and you've all taken a tour, which I appreciate very much. It's much easier to talk to you about the facility, but anytime we're over a hundred and twenty. We are, for most classifications, we're maxed out. And that's to make sure we're putting the inmates in the right location with the right inmates in the jail. So we're utilizing this for two reasons. Classification and the county attorney and the judges who are requesting no context, so very good reason. And we've had a lot of complicated cases where we have multiple co-defendants involved. And in order to keep them separated in a jail with only realistically two pods, you have four defendants right off the bat and running issues. The one in Dickinson County, which has been there for quite a while. Reality is his case is still ongoing, but there's multiple other co-defendants in our jail. And with these co-defendants, a lot. And with these co-defendants, a lot of these are serious crimes, so their classification level is higher, so it really even more limits our ability to put them somewhere where we can feel we can keep the facility as safe as it should be. Our earlier issues, when I first started talking with you in twenty-three and twenty-four, were female inmates. And there's a handout here for our female population and kind of illustrate how it's increased over time. A reminder to you is we have the ability to hold eighteen females in this facility, if they're all perfectly well behaved inmates. Reality is I try never to let the number get over sixteen and I try to keep it at fifteen going into a weekend. That being that over the weekend, we have places to move people and there's some abilities in the jail for the staff to do what they need to be doing. It says twenty here today, that was the day this slide was made, the actual number for today is seventeen. Of which two are what I would consider. High liability, they're single sell-off, but so right off the bat, that shows you. We're we're already. In a in a pickle on that. So when we talk about the invoice and the reality is. This is very difficult to budget, we've talked plenty about budget in the last couple of days. This isn't me screaming. You know, we need a new facility tomorrow. If you look at that average daily population, it's gone up almost a hundred percent in ten years. But really, the bulk of that has just happened since the COVID crisis. We did that dip and then went up. And not to say that this is cases backed up, the severity of cases. There's so many different arguments that could be made, they're very subjective, anything I would tell you could be argued either way. As to why are numbers at high, I have confidence though with our actual primary, we do have good data on. That this number I think will trend downward, not a lot, I don't think we're gonna get back to the day where I walk in and we have to shut down a pod, we don't have enough inmates to fill it. But I do think it will trend down and get us back into that one-ten area where I feel much safer in making decisions for the facility. So what I'm asking for is basically last year in twenty twenty-four, we spent a little over fifty-two thousand housing inmates that have a location. We would like the invoice account on a quarterly basis. Requesting those funds redistributed back. As a facility need. The first three quarter or the first three months, first quarter of this year, like I said, is eleven thousand eight hundred and sixty. Our inmate population today is a hundred and twenty-seven. And that's the ACH number, in reality, Riley County Jail has a hundred and thirty-five inmates in its custody. ACH number is what we use in all our public because that's who the county is medically responsible. And I don't want to have two sets of numbers out there and have an issue with ACH in our contract.
Yeah.
So. I talked with Mr. Vargo last year saying, oh, this is not sustainable for us. But at the same time, I'm not saying you need to build a forty million dollar complex in the next year or two, I think this is part.
I never went up quick.
This is part of doing business, in my opinion, and I don't think, I don't wanna start panic. Right now, we're getting forty to forty-five dollars a day. I personally inspect any facility we're putting inmates in because we're still responsible for them at these other facilities, we're not just shipping our problems off. It does create a lot more transports for us, there again, that's a budgetary impact. I had an inmate that went on height and watch up in Washington County. I directed them to go pick them up because I want us doing the height and watch. So we are responsible, we're not shipping inmates off and leaving them, we're trying to make sure we coordinate with our court dates and everything else. I had to work with the county attorney, we've got juveniles, Gary County Juvenile Detention Center was full at one point, two weeks ago, we had eight juveniles in custody spread out all over the state, these are four and six hour round trip transports. We don't have staffing, we're running out of vehicles due to the staffing numbers of how many court transports we're having to do right now. So we're doing a lot of our, even though our staffing is pretty good, I think we're down to six COs, which you know from the past, that's really good for us. But. You know, we used to run a day shift with five COs and supervise. We're now running it with eight, when you start adding on all the transport vehicles and stuff. These are things that I'm not gonna make any guesses, I would just like some direction as to is this plausible? At least or. You know, even if it's reimbursing seventy percent, I mean, something, because we're getting hit everywhere on this.
It's still lower than building a building.
Well, that's kinda, that's what I said, that's part of doing business, the reality is, this is a cheaper option, rushing.
I look at and I think it's. Our responsibility, I mean, statutorily, our responsibility, so I would refund you another B as well, man, it's just a harsh reality, but. Like to see the numbers come back down to the sustainable range too.
I will continue to come every month and.
I think. Some of the larger areas, including ours, that's that's a trend, it's not just here. This is where we find ourselves at socially and culturally and. Probably isn't gonna change.
There is one other issue that is gonna hit us going forward. We're paying forty and forty-five dollars a day, the federal government is paying a hundred and fifty-six. So a lot of these jails, in fact, two of these jails, we will no longer accept any additional females, so I'm having to go find, I'll have to go find another jail or two.
Why can't you females just get along?
Like I said, we only have seventeen, so I'm only having one female have house for that reason, and then the one in Dickinson is specific to a case, and then we have three more. That are specific to our inmate population and we can't have them. We can't split them up without putting them on a lockdown of twenty-three and one, I don't wanna be bound up on discipline for administering segregation.
I I don't have an issue with it. I feel like it's our responsibility.
Yeah, well, and the transportation and salary cost, those things are on, you know, in the.
Medical cost. You're right, it's. It's an expense, but it could be a lot worse.
And I've got the Celine County, that they built a giant new building.
Went and toured that jail and I think I encourage you all to go tour that jail. Very well designed, the reality with Celine County, though, is the cost, my guess, Gary County, I think, is charging over eighty dollars a day. So we would be doubling, I can't imagine Celine County is charging anything under a hundred right now. Because if they do have the ability to house a large amount of inmates, they're looking at federal contracts right now. So. But, yeah, I. You're gonna have to put a little faith in me that I'm I'm running it right and I wouldn't come out, I didn't think if this was an absolute necessity, I will continue to house outside. For safety.
As I said, I know, know that, know that. Facility is gonna start because they've got. More room than they need evidently.
Someday maybe we'll have that problem, probably not before I retire.
Right. I'm saying, you know, looking for other places, but. Affordable places, I guess.
Yes, and we will be, we'll we'll be responsible, there's a lot, lot of jails within an hour's drive, so I mean, we will check them all out, some of them I won't put inmates in. I can talk about individually to you why.
I think Mark, you can make a motion on that. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the facility invoice for Riley County Police Department.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the invoice from R C D for. Eleven thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I want to do this every quarter, then?
Well, that's what I wanted to know, do you want me to present every quarter or do you want me to just send me, and if you have questions, I can come and present?
Yeah, let's do that.
And I'll just send it to. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Second. Uh, yes.
I think that sounds.
Twenty-five minutes?
Twenty-five minutes, yeah. Yeah, I mean, this is also for you, you guys can weigh in on that.
Okay, I'm gonna move that the county commissioners, including Chairman McKinley, Vice Chair Fokie and Commissioner Ford, with Jacob Hanson, interim county counselor, attorney for the commission. Recession to executive session pursuant to the non-elected personnel matters of the Kansas Open Meetings Act with the purpose of discussing the work conduct of an employee and to protect the privacy of the employee. The open meeting to resume the county commission chamber at ten fifty-five AM.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded for the county commission to recess into executive session for reasons previously stated. The performance matter of non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meeting Act, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I would make a motion that the record reflect no binding action was taken during the executive session.
All second?
Been moved and seconded, the record reflect no binding action was taken during the executive session, all in favor?
Aye. Okay. Okay, I'll move the county commissioners, including Chairman McKinley, Vice Chair Fokie and Commissioner Ford, with Jacob Hansen, interim county councillor, attorney for the commission, recess into executive session pursuant to the non-elected personnel matters, exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act for the purpose of discussing the work conduct of an employee and to protect the privacy of the employee, the open meeting to resume in the county commission chamber at eleven-ten, excuse me, eleven-ten AM.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded for the county commission to recess into executive session for reasons previously stated and as a performance matter of non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meeting Act, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
So, once the board decides what that answer is, the next question, of course, would be what portion of the fence shall each side maintain responsibility for? You know, it's pretty common that usually they do the right-hand rule, which is one takes, you know, what the western half and one takes the eastern half, is pretty typical as far as that goes. Now, one little hiccup with this as well is that, you know, we can only obligate a party to contribute as far as legally sufficient fits. My understanding that the Hargraves are intending to go a little bit above and beyond that, so it's, it'll just be something I have to be very particular in, in the order. So, you know, of course, we're only obligating the Salzman's if the board chooses to, to participate up into the level of a legally sufficient fence. And not over that. So, that was, so basically you have those two questions, is it going to be the entire partition fence line or is it only going to be a portion?
What, and what's? What's the difference again?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the difference is, is that we're examining, examining whether or not a certain statute applies, and that statute, of course, is twenty-nine-three. And as explained in the car, there's two elements that need to be present in order for this exemption to apply. First, the occupant must not wish his or her land to be enclosed, which we're taking from the Salzman's, they've made it very clear that they do not wish their land to be enclosed. So, that's one part, but they have to meet both. Which the second is the occupant may not occupy or use the subject land otherwise than in common with the adjoining landowner. Now, as the otherwise in common with the adjoining landowner is a little tricky because you have to have basically either a cropland against a pasture land or vice versa, you can't have it where the, the property is being used in the same manner. Now, that's also another interesting point here because in the Attorney General's opinion, you basically either have to let the other landowner utilize their land for the same purpose is more or less what that means as well. So, knowing that, based upon at least our conversations, is that the Salzman's clearly don't want their land to be used as a, you know, additional, you know, pasture land, they, they don't want that, so they're not going to use it otherwise than in common. That doesn't apply. So, then that leaves us just with, well, what, what is the occupation? And so, when we look at occupation, of course, Kansas law isn't, is a little sparse in this area. So, what I've suggested using is in the Blacks Law Dictionary, what the definition, definition of occupancy is, which if you read it there, just as the act state or condition of holding, possessing, or residing in or on something, actual possession, residence, or tendency, especially of a dwelling or land. I think this tends to suggest that occupancy can merely just mean owning.
Okay. That's okay.
So, what do you guess, the west half, I don't know exactly half, but just calling that, the west half isn't, because they're both going to be pasture land, right? So, the fence fee doesn't.
Well, potentially, the, the problem is, is that they're, they're not, the, the Salzman's don't want to use this, this green portion here as pasture land. And that's where the problem is, is because that's where what creates that otherwise than in common. So, it's not your traditional, just, it's not your traditional pasture versus crop. It goes a little bit beyond that by saying, well, we, you, you have to use basically the property for the same purpose. And if you're not going to use it for the same purpose, then the fence fee laws apply.
So, what? Points, or why is it just a strip, basically it's for access, is that what the green strip is?
So, the, the green strip is just kind of my, my showing of the land that they, that the Salzman's are claiming that, one, of course, that they don't want enclosed, and two, that they don't occupy, because they're claiming, of course, that they don't occupy in it. And I may have not mentioned this, but the board can still find that, you know, the, as far as the Salzman's go, they're, they're not doing anything with the land, other than I guess they, you know, they have maybe use it to access the other portions of their property, but they don't do anything with the land other than that, so there's room for the commission to find that they don't occupy under the fence fee law. It really depends on the boards, what, what you guys want to determine on that. The, the, the law is so gray and unexplored in this area that there's room for both interpretations.
Then, not, so the red section, you say it's undisputed, so that is definitely.
That one, yes. Yes, because you very clearly have the, the pasture here and you have the cropland here, and that.
Even though there's existing fences?
Even though there's existing fences, because it's not on the partition line, and that's why, well, there's not, there's not an existing fence on this property. There's one that goes up on the north side, but right on the other side here, where their pasture is, or crop, yeah, there's no, there's no fence line there.
Oh, okay. So, that ends. So, it definitely is a fifty-fifty there?
I would say so.
For that section, but it's just the west, that west section that's. Is it?
That's kind of up, up in the air a little bit.
Is it?
But even they could at some point in time decide to do something with that, and then does change in the dynamic.
Or no, that's true.
So, I, I tend to feel that if you own, if you're occupying, if you own the property, you're occupying the property. I mean, somewhere down the road, they might want to put a house on there or something, I mean, let me be tough to do, but I'm just using it as a general hypothetical, but. So, to me, I think you've, you've got to run it the entire way and split it fifty-fifty based off just what's legal.
That's the whole thing, you know, split the cost.
Reason, the. Yes, minimum cost, is that correct?
Whatever that statutory legal requirement is.
That's obvious. So, if I understand there's consensus that to, for, of course, my office draft an order, we're going to include the entire partition line as the partition fence that is subject to the fence view. And who would you like to be maintaining the west half and who do we want to maintain the east half?
Like the old thing, you know, stand in the middle.
Yeah, the right-hand rule, so that would be Gary and Diana would take the eastern half and the Salzman's would take the western.
Yes. But again, we talked about maintaining. This required is basically a what, three wire?
Yeah, three strand, yep.
But if they put up something different than that, is he still responsible for maintenance, even though it isn't?
Yeah, they, they would still be responsible for maintenance, but only maintenance up to the level, of course, again, the three-stan broad wire, which would certainly get interesting in trying to calculate exactly how much the person owes. Frankly, that's going to be between the landowners to decide what that looks like, but we can write it in the order that they're supposed to split the costs. they're supposed to split the costs consistent with illegally sufficient fence.
Because if there's a damage, all they'd have to pay is. The three wires.
Well, yeah.
If, and I don't know, because I know you were talking about putting a steel rail fence, is that?
Barbed wire.
Oh, you're just doing bar, oh, okay. Because I thought at one point somebody was talking about doing more.
It's all gonna be barbed wire.
Just bar, oh, okay. I thought you had a discussion about something else. Okay, sounds. Yep.
Yep, agreed.
Yep.
I give you the current guidance you need.
I believe so, and if not, we'll be back, but I'm pretty sure we got it all.
Okay. So we need to make it a motion to make it official, then. So I'll go ahead and move that the Board direct the County Counselor's Office to draft a fence view order consistent with the deliberations of the Board regarding the fence view that was conducted on Friday, April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded, the Board direct County Counselor's Office to draft a fence view order consistent with the deliberations of the Board regarding the fence view conducted April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
I think I'm gonna get it sent over to your language you want in that motion.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes. Then.
Think we'll have any more? What's the sum of?
Don't jinx us.
Oh, it was just a question.
Don't jinx us.
I was ready to jinx it, I was, oh, we're gonna have five more, so.
You just jinxed.
Yeah, I did.
No, we're not gonna have any, so it's a number.
Yeah, there you go. If you didn't know.
Yeah, when it's raining.
Go make snow angels.
That'd be more fun than.
Standing out in the heat? Yeah, I agree. I agree. You can dress for that occasion, you can't undress for heat, and we've had that conversation.
Aren't you?
Been in the heat down one of forty years, you think I'd be used to it, kind of like the wind, but.
Making fence view law.
Doing more than a fence.
That's been kind of a long morning. As, I don't, I don't have anything else.
Bad enough.
I think so. Of course, we didn't have that meeting on Monday, so I guess, I guess we made up for it.
Yeah.
Seemed like it, right?
Sure.
Yeah. All right, well, I'll make a motion that we adjourn the May twenty-ninth meeting in the Riley County Commission.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn the May twenty-ninth meeting in the Riley County.